And to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her land into this globe with liberty and justice for all.
From the Senate. One more, thank you. Um Julie, do we have four? Uh fourth order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of items?
There is not.
I would entertain the motion. Thank you.
I agree.
Got that down?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is announcements.
Need a vote on this?
Oh, yes. Um all in favor of approving the agenda? Signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. So item number five, announcements. They're part of the announcements.
There will be some announcements in my district administration's update.
Okay. And item number six is celebrations.
Dr. Watson.
We do have one. Uh we have a Panther Pride Award for one of our favorite staff members who is a little suspicious because her whole family showed up. Uh so um Rachel, you ready? So Rachel's gonna give her the award. I'll read while she's coming up to get it. Um Rachel, you wanna stay here for a second? I'll read a little bit of what was written about Mrs. Lori Elwood. Uh leader over here knows Zellwood and what she stands for. Uh since a few things are written by her colleagues about her, so I believe Ms. Zellwood exemplifies the Panther traits because she shows a lot of respect and guidance when some of her students are really struggling. She models these traits for the students as well. She's always respectful of the students. Of all the people in our building, she may be the best at her job. She treats her students with respect, which is one of the reasons they love her so much. She's safe, judgment-free, competent to many of her students that don't have a go-to person in their lives. Lori respectfully and confidentially listens and counsels her toughest kids. Uh Lori is the touchstone of a lifeline that keeps our marginalized students engaged in their high school career. She does what's best for students each and every day. Um here's some examples of what Ms. Zellwood has given to our school and to our students. Uh Lori took charge when we came back to school. We had boxes of unclaimed lost and found items. She washed everything, got cabinets organized so our students could resource when needed. They contained socks, hats, coats, shirts, sweats, jeans, and shoes. It's already been utilized. It's so nice to have this for our students. And Lori just saw that need to be done. And that's what she does every day. Uh one person wrote, "I saw how she deals with some students who are struggling in class and those are a really bad day." And I truly admire the effort she's given, not just to help our students, make them feel better, but making it better. Their school really cares about them. Um she'll try whatever she's doing to help any student in need. She does loads of laundry. She's empathetic here. She's willing to help with any basic need. Um she's gone an extra mile when she goes on out on job shadows or internship placements with our students. She even offered to come to work early to drive to Rachel's house so she could get her to do a job on time. She handled Rachel's "Don't buy any more purses" Ms. Zellwood during a new placement. This this one will reveal who it's from. It says, "When my son Jordan was in high school, he needed very positive attention with Lori. Recently, he's home with a friend of his. We took her on a tour of the high school in Jordan and be sure we showed his friend the gym stage where he used to have his talks with Mrs. Zellwood because that's his favorite memory of all of his school. She starts every school day with a room full of kids who want to tell her about what happened to them last night or the weekend, the good, the bad, the really ugly. She somehow prioritizes the ones who really need some attention here now, and she sorts the rest throughout the day. What a skill to have. What a blessing for our students." It goes on. Um there's comments about things that I couldn't do my job without her. Um so like a force multiplier for everybody in our school. She and the the comment here that really struck me is she's patient, calm, respectful, caring, thoughtful, considerate, passionate. This has to be the new suit. Reliable, friendly, the list just goes on. I've worked with numerous peer professionals throughout the years, and Lori stands out as one of the best. Pittsville is honored to have her in staff. She's very deserving of a Panther Pride Award, and Rachel stands with her. You don't have to give a speech, but.
Well, it explains why none of you would give me a speech. For this evening, but I couldn't do my job without all of you, so.
So for all the folks who came, I promise when they had to be here for Ms. Zellwood part for the first few minutes, we're at seven o'clock. Welcome to.
Thank you.
No secrets.
No secrets. Well, Lori, we are we are so lucky to have you. Thank you for working through this day.
Rachel, we didn't have a.
Thank you guys.
Item number seven, or student reports.
Student meeting, that's that's kind of like things that I'm behind doing.
Okay, I'll leave the bathroom. I'll hold on here. Okay. Yes, I'll stay for you, Brad.
So we're just gonna set a little update here on a couple of things that came down.
So yeah, I'll join you. If you don't have.
Oh.
So we're gonna be at Convention Food Service.
Yeah, fantastic.
As you guys can see, our responses.
Yeah.
All right.
So we're just gonna go over the food service survey, and October 25th is the day that we're gonna see your classes going on. So as far as these student lunch surveys went, we gave these to students grades four through 12. We got 139 responses. We're gonna analyze these responses with Mr. Andres and discuss the next steps of how he wants to react to that. We'll move on very soon. Our takeaways here. So as far as improvement from last year to this year, roughly three quarters of all students, four through 12, say yes, there was improvement. One quarter says no, but like I said, we're gonna look through with Mr. Andres, see what those specific numbers were and what. So this was a main problem that really affected the high school students as far as middle school. Fourth grade went, they didn't have a problem with time for lunch, but in high school, it is a pretty big problem. A lot of people don't have enough time to keep their lunch late, sit down and enjoy it, or get to the lunch line. So as you can see, about half the students did not have time, and the other quarter only sometimes had time. But this is another thing we're working with Mr. Watson, Dr. Watson, and also Mr. Andres. And breakfast after first block, just a little thing. I know last year it was a very similar toddler, but um half the people said it wasn't applicable, but not the problem, and a little under half said.
So for October 25th, as he said, uh it was a day that everyone was testing except for the seniors, so basically we didn't have anything to do. So we just kind of made it our own day. Um so starting out in the morning, we had, obviously we took attendance, made sure that everyone was there. I think we had roughly a ninety-five percent there.
Yeah.
We were missing like two or three kids, so good for attendance. Uh right away, we did some breakout sessions. Um you could do volunteering in elementary school classrooms, which we had, uh I think a little around a dozen people.
Yeah.
Around a dozen people that went and helped with elementary school teachers. We had a couple of people that went to the library just because it was raining outside. We couldn't do too much. Um cleaning up the towel and stuff. So we had, I think, three or four students that went to the uh went to the library and helped, I think they cleaned windows. I don't know if Ms. Minzer was there, so. Then we uh then the other part of it was a UWSP, uh I think representative. There's a guy from UWSP came and helped us. Um he came and talked to us about UW applications, which uh there were probably fifty. So we had roughly sixty-eight people that were there and while I was there. So um the guy helped out a lot, gave me some cool sunglasses, so I was pretty happy about that. And after that, we had three speakers come in. Uh we had my brother, Eric. We had Sam Bowden come in. We had Angel Belair. Basically talked about their experience after high school. Um Eric was a senior in college. Angel graduated two years, was in the military, and then Sam just graduated. So we had a nice range from people that were still in college to come and talk to us about college life and all that we need here about us. Um and after that, we had our senior meeting, which just consisted of us figuring out a senior trip. Um we had our president, first student president of senior class, uh got a new website up that um basically he sat on the survey and everyone would just click a button and they'd give him the feedback, so it was super easy. Um and then I don't remember what else we discussed in the senior meeting. Um then after, yeah, then after that, we I think we went to lunch, not games, but it was kind of mixed together. Uh but basically we had fun games, athletic games in the gym, for anyone that wanted to go do some sporty stuff. And then we had board games and stuff in the library, which games that test their mind. I mean, me and Fox played Stratego, which very educational game. Um I think lessons learned. Uh we could definitely, I think, do better planning this moment for later. I think it's March, right, March?
Yeah.
Um we're thinking we're doing it again, uh but we could, you know, have a normal day, I guess. But um I think the attendance was good. The attendance was thorough throughout the whole day and it's it's all right.
Can I comment on that day a little bit for our busy education? So if my peers find this to be a senior skip day quite often, in that when the seniors give with uh of the idea that everyone else is testing, they're like, I'm not coming to school that day. And so how to make it valuable, um Mrs. Anderson and the gentleman here said, well, let's make it something that seniors want to do. Uh we only had three absences out of a whole senior class, and so and it was it was a mixture of fun and stuff. And so treating them like young adults wasn't perfect, but we tried, you know, and so it doesn't fit in the scholarship window, which is what I would love. If we if it was like a little later and we could do all the scholarships then. Uh and the one in March, like Brad said, March is better weather. And so I don't know if we what we can plan for that one too, but we're gonna keep going stuff that's respectful of where seniors are at in their lives instead of making it like a day-long study hall, because I I don't think I would want that.
Okay, I've got another question. Who is uh who created this student lunch survey?
I did.
You guys did? Okay. Well, thank you very much for doing it. That was a good topic. It is a concern to us. And how many questions then were on that survey?
Um well, to begin with, what I made it, um I think there were five, just to keep it short and straight.
Okay.
People wouldn't be like, this survey is taking too long, we're gonna do it. Uh but I think it ended up with like seven, because we just asked what grade they were in and.
Demograph.
Basically just to see like who was responding. But we wanted it to be honest, so we didn't like collect emails or anything, so.
And guys, you were gonna share that with Mr. Andres, right?
Yeah. We we met with him, discussed like what we wanted in this survey, and this is what we came out with. And now that it's been roughly like a few weeks, two or three weeks, uh we're gonna go back and have another meeting with him and go over what the responses were.
And as a reminder, the board, uh Mr. Andres will be coming in December to do a board presentation on the food service program. That's that's up on the slate for uh December board meeting.
I just want to tell you that you guys are a big asset to feed on the ground for us, and doing stuff like what you're doing is really appreciated. Um this is good feedback, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I also like how you presented your data. Thank you. Um last move ahead to agenda item number eight, district.
You can go ahead to the. So the state report cards, um as you may be aware, those those were released approximately a month ago, but embargoed to the public. That is tomorrow is the release date, so those will be shared with the media tomorrow. And will likely be published on on most local news sites. There are no changes from the uh report card data I shared with the board and with staff. The embargo is for them to analyze data and make sure there were no errors, so there are no changes to the report card from what it shows the board. But that'll be publicly released tomorrow. Um the administrative team will be giving a presentation at the December meeting summarizing and kind of takeaways from the report card and other student assessment data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So that'll be upcoming in December. We'll break down the report card and other assessment data. So um as you may be aware, at the budget revision meeting, you approved the opportunity to offer a basic auto mechanics class for third term. Um I'm happy to say we've had some developments since the approval, because we had some other things that needed to kind of fall in the line. So I'm gonna have Dr. Watson kind of talk about that and the next steps.
We offered this to Mr. Alan Hughes. Uh he has some things to jump through to make it happen, but he's a very good fit for it. Um he knows the students and he knows them very well. Um he would teach fourth block, third term, and have a pre-created third block so that he can design this course. Uh we also pay him to do learning visits between now and then um to Marshfield and other places to offer similar courses, so he can start to get an idea of what exact tools we need that we don't already have. Uh what does curriculum look like for a class like this? Um Mr. Heck and I gave a little bit of heads up that you're in a class like this, we have six students right now, so that we're six. Um that you're likely to have somebody who can build an engine the first day and someone could like, what's the problem? You know, and so figuring out how to teach students in with that group is gonna be very important. Um a class like this needs to be offered more than once a year at a school like this, because it only fits in upperclassman's schedule just just right sometimes. The kids want it the most, fine, darn, I can't do it because of my youth apprenticeships or other things are going on. So this is a chance for us to develop curriculum networks for us, figure out what supplies we need, um but it's definitely a learning process. Uh we are in the process of scheduling, is that what you're saying, or not yet?
I think I've done it done yet.
Okay. Uh but we'll at least pencil out some schedules for these six students, and I'm hoping we go up to about twelve, but we're gonna cap at twelve for the first time.
Yeah, this is exciting uh to get this up and running here this time.
I just have one question. Um were we originally gonna partner with Midstate on it, and was Midstate teaching? Because I felt like that's what we.
Yep.
Talked about at the meeting, and so I'm just, I don't know, what's the difference? Like, was Midstate gonna cost us?
They don't have the staff.
Right.
It just comes down to they don't have the staff and uh this this is actually the the salary for this individual is being covered from the tech incentive grant, which is the money we get from the state for students earning industry certificates. So it's actually, that money can be used for staffing for additional CTE courses like this, which is what we're doing for that one-term offering. So we we asked Midstate if they would be able to offer a instructor and then potentially have this offer maybe for dual credit, but they don't have, they they are having trouble teaching classes on their campus. They just don't have the staff. So that was our original plan.
We would like this course to be dual credit. It's not yet. It's a shallow end version of it, because we gotta get good at this and then use the dual credit curriculum. Uh but we could probably offer twice the type of education courses we do.
Still.
The woods class, the welding class.
And this was area of need here, you know, so we're pretty happy. Students are signing up for it. We'll see where it goes. So these are some photos from the Wersa State Convention, which was Mary Ann, it's been three weeks already, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, it was early October. So the first, the upper left picture is a picture, a picture of Wally Leepart, uh myself, uh Wally is the superintendent Gilman. Uh we co-presented on the um revitalizing a community vision. It's related to the um grant that Pittsville is one of five communities to receive for economic development. Uh thought the presentation went really well. It was very well attended. We had a lot of folks reaching out afterwards, asking if they could come um and visit the campus and wanted to connect and find out more about some of the things we're doing. Um I would point that I'll point out that the this presentation was approached from the lens of the school district, like what what role does the school district play in this? So like tomorrow, we have a small community forum taking place related to this down at the community center. Mary Ann is the, I believe you titled it the headmistress.
No, no, the mistress of Sarah.
Mistress of Sarah. She told me, mistress of Sarah. So. And she uh so this will be kind of laying out the groundwork for how this all came about and the work that's being done and going to come after. Um it it was a good presentation. I think people were excited to hear about some of the things. Gilman, very similar in a lot of ways to Pittsville, so that was a fun presentation. The second presentation, um Tammy Hardinger and I co-presented on the relationship between the school district and a a public library in a small community. Um thought thought it was wonderful. I I I said during the presentation, we are so fortunate to have Tammy Hardinger and what she does with our public library. Uh and we just kind of talked about the, you know, when we talk about literacy and and, you know, getting our students to develop and our community to develop a love of reading. It's, you know, your school and your public library, it just makes sense that we're kind of social hubs, that people gather in those places. Uh but she's wonderful, and the folks who attended thought that very much. They were very impressed with uh what she does with the resources in a small community. So celebrating our veterans, can we go to the next one?
Yeah.
Thank you. So as we know, uh Pittsville has a longstanding tradition of celebrating our honoring our veterans and um both uh Mrs. Friday's not here, and I've got Dr. Watson and Mrs. Friday and staff did a phenomenal job of setting up uh just a wonderful series of events. On Friday, we had a wonderful turnout. Never ceases to maybe every year. It's it's been the second year, but it seems like there's, you know, it's it's more touching for the veterans. I know they loved, I had veterans, I was here for basketball at the gym Saturday morning with the youth kids, and one of the veterans came in and said, can you let me into the elementary building so I can go down and take a picture that my granddaughter um did for me, and I said absolutely. So there there were folks coming in to take pictures, but very very touching. Lot of planning went into it, but I know it's appreciated, and we appreciate um our veterans. There's a few few more pictures just from from the day. What I love about it here is all the all grade levels get involved in this. Pictures from the ceremony at the high school. Dr. Watson, is there anything you would like to add?
No, it it I guess yes, I would just say that we're um trying to do something a little different every year, because often community veterans come to these ceremonies every year. So before we go, we underwent speeches this year and went with letters from veterans and student performances. Uh last we did a live holding. Talking to my veteran friends, if I ever come to school in uniform, if I do it for veterans, they act as my bosses, and then there's like teamwork involved, because they don't want to like, you know, they're staying in school. So in that process, you learn what other that what other soldiers are doing, and you find out there's a lot of cool stuff going on. We need to get a Black Hawk on the other side of the road.
Well, I told him, we used to have a Huey in Hartford, Fourth of July back when I was a kid. I remember that. I don't think that's a stretch to be a Black Hawk.
I'm only a captain.
It's a few old line names.
Few more makes sense.
I think there's one one more. Yeah, this this was outstanding, that the uh the aisles on the door where folks were, and I know, because my my daughter was one that was asked to do an interview of a veteran. And you know, that was important for her to sit down and have that conversation. She was literally like, I have to do this, and afterwards she was telling me. Or then she cheated her uncle with her great uncle Jerome. Um and it was just a neat experience, but like I said, you know, we have a longstanding tradition of uh you know, strong law enforcement background and military background in the community, and days like this are important, so it was a wonderful day. That is my update.
Any questions for Jason?
I'd just like to say that that it's very touching, and and I know you guys along with a lot of the staff, so I don't think everybody was involved. But uh I'm very, very impressed with this. Good job on that. And we thank you for your service. Was there was there an incident with a deer?
Yes. Yes, I can. So we um we had a we had a buck that worked its way into the playground area and then struggled with finding an exit. And this was early in the morning. We got a phone call and it repeatedly rammed into the fence trying to get out. Um we held the kids in for the morning recess, and uh Mr. Giles attempted to contact some uh some individuals to get some guidance on what to do, and eventually it laid down. I was exhausted for multiple reasons right now at this point in the year. Uh and we just left it alone. Eventually, it's it's sat up, and then it eventually got up. Ultimately, um we were able to get someone from the DNR here, and uh they made the determination. The lower jaw had become detached from ramming into the petri kiln, and we had to dispatch the animal. Um I will say, Mrs. Anderson, very impressive. I would like to share that magnificent animal, and the thing about it is, did not go to to waste. So Mrs. Anderson, would you care to comment on?
That's why I just.
Your prowess. I know, I know you were going. I have photos.
Um so we skinned the deer up and quartered it. Um tomorrow, we have a couple of high school students who are going to need enrichment session on processing the quarters into steaks and roast and scraps, and then we'll use them throughout the year for learning experience. So um I believe the loose or carrying blood taxi is going to be um mounting it uh through their shoulder mount and then donating it back to school. So then hopefully, you know, the agricider Lindsay can teach them how to score the beer and just a really cool story. I never thought I'd be. Never thought I'd be becoming loved during teaching.
But having students experience something like that and and putting everything at its best efforts and nothing goes to waste.
A very sad end for the deer, but we can make the most out of it.
Well, and such were, well, it would have, for for folks, since I mean, obviously we're talking with the jaw, like the animal would have been out, it would have starved to death, and it was the right, it was the right decision in the best of a bad situation. I will also comment, there are some local property owners that are disappointed that had that particular deer on their trail cam. That had it on their trail cam two weeks ago. So it was a cat, it was a cat, right? No, it was an ape. It was an ape. Well, yeah, but it was a magnificent animal, so.
And that is, that's that's just outstanding, that, you know, follow up, the follow up, the follow through.
Yeah.
I mean, it just. I bet you there was some island experiences for some of these.
Yep.
Yeah.
And an appreciation, appreciation.
Yes.
Outstanding.
All right.
Very cool. Thank you for bringing that up. It's something to share and to be proud of.
It's up.
Yes, yes. Okay, um then on to item number nine, consent agenda items. Meeting notice certification, regular and closed session limits until the ninth, special meeting minutes until the twenty-fifth, financial status, um resignations, retirements. Any questions about the consent agenda? If now I entertain the motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Any other questions, comments? Kind of on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item ten, information items for this week.
Sure.
Thank you for having me, Mike. It's not too often we get to talk about special education, so this is part one of the eight-part series. I'm hoping to have you down with me at least three hours tonight. Um so first thing, so who is a child with a disability? So a child with a disability is a student who needs special education and related services is between the ages of three and twenty-one, and has not yet graduated from high school. So for our kiddos, there are twelve different categories they can potentially qualify in for special education. Autism, blind and visually impaired, deaf and hard of hearing, deaf-blind, emotional behavioral disability, intellectual disability, orthopedic impairment, other health impairment, significant developmental delay, specific learning disabilities, speech and language, and then traumatic injury. So there will be one acronym that I use a couple of different times tonight, so special education is the king of acronyms. IEP will be the one that you'll hear most frequently. So either individualized education plan or individualized education program, it can be used interchangeably.
Next slide is number.
So who determines if a child has disability? So essentially, what that boils down to is the IEP team. So it's not something that a doctor can prescribe. You know, sometimes from a school district perspective, you get more of that now than you probably ever had before. My doctor said I should come to school and get one of those IEP events. That's not necessarily how it works. Um so the IEP team consists. So the IEP team consists of parents who are equal, are equal partners. In the process, the child when applicable, obviously for some very young adults, a three-year-old is going to have a whole lot to say in regards to their educational program. The school district, so representative who has the ability to allocate funding. So essentially making sure that the programs and services are being met at school. Regular education teacher, special education teacher, someone who can interpret the testing results that we do. So in some cases that might just be your speech language pathologist and others it might have to be a school psychologist because there are certain assessments that only certain individuals can administer and then interpret. There are also instances where outside agencies are invited because they have specific knowledge of kiddo. And at any point in time, a family can invite an outside representative. So if, as a family, I decided I want to invite my former school district because they have investment knowledge of buying my kiddo, you can do that. A parent can invite them every day of the life.
Next slide is done.
So referral process. So who can make a referral? A physician, nurse, psychologist, social worker, or administrator of a social agency who reasonably believes a child brought to him or her, her services is a child with a disability has a legal duty to make a referral. So as I said before, a lot of times, especially in recent years, there have been numerous times where families go to their, their physician and the physician gives a suggestion that special education may be needed. In theory, that doctor should make that referral. If the doctor feels that's something that would benefit that child, they should be contacting me and we should be going to that referral process. Unfortunately, there's only been one time in the seven years that a clinic has called for a nurse system. Most oftentimes it's, well, the doctor says I should do this. Which is unfortunate because again, they do have that legal duty. When referring a child, the person making that referral doesn't inform the family. So others that can make that referral, parents, absolutely, and obviously school district representatives also have that legal duty to make that referral. Next slide. So the evaluation. So before an IEP team evaluates your child, the IEP team starts by looking at the information they already have. So your statewide assessments, your classroom assessments, documentation for behaviors. Those are all things that we want to look at to make sure that we have a culmination of all the information to make sure we're doing a comprehensive evaluation. Parents will share information about their child. Parents and the rest of the team will decide if the team needs more information. This can happen at a meeting or through a phone, email, or if we want to communicate. Sometimes more information is required. Then the team decides how to get more information. The teacher might test your child, they might observe your child in the class. Again, our goal is a comprehensive evaluation. So before the teacher tests your child, you'll be told in writing about the assessments that we will do and the school will ask permission to assess your student. So in special education, it's not something that we can just do because we think that that's, that's what's best for a kiddo. Families have all the rights. If they decide that as a school, I may referral throughout a student because of the information that we have. Parents can essentially right off the bat tell us, no, that's not something we want to do. And if they don't give us permission to assess, the referral stops right there. Next slide. So eligibility, IEP development. So parents again are equal partners on the IEP team along with staff. At the meeting, the team will talk about all the information. This includes what parents have told the team. The team will decide if a student has a disability and if a student requires special education. School will tell you in writing that the student is not eligible for special education. And if the child meets eligibility criteria, I know this is all very discussed. The team determines the student also needs special design instruction and IEP is ready. So again, if a family decides that they want to go through the assessments, we go through eligibility, a student qualifies for special education. We determine they have a need for special design instruction. They still have to give us consent before we can do another thing. So just because we went through that entire process, doesn't mean that on Monday that student will be starting special education services. Again, parents have all the legal bits. So honestly, what is, special education will have the most important slide? So I think all of us in here probably, outside of Mr. Fox, remember a time when special education looked different. So special education is not a place. It is the most intensive intervention along the continuum of service defined by individual needs, services in place. Services that a student receives are based on analysis that digs deep into why the student is having difficulty accessing, engaging, or making progress regarding standards and expectations. Our goal is to create an inclusive learning environment. Inclusion is an import to education based on the premise that all students should be accepted and valued for their unique abilities and included as integral school members. Special education students receive their education alongside their peers without disabilities to the maximum extent appropriate. Students should not be removed from regular education classroom unless learning cannot be achieved even with supplementary aid and services. So why is inclusion our goal? Because our kids are regular education students first and they have the right for guaranteed and viable protection. Does anyone have any questions about the information I gave? I know it's very broad and very surface level. I mean, truthfully, I probably could spend hours and hours and hours talking about timelines and different things, but I don't know how much that information is pertinent for you as board members, but if you have any questions about those things.
Have it.
I have the one.
Yes, I see.
And, and it's okay if you don't have the answer to it. So just wondering in the context of all the strategic planning that you've done and what you're sharing, just would love to hear some ideas on what might be some strategies that as a district we need to put in place to be the best. You know, like what, what does it mean that families and, and students are like, I want to come to Pittsville because I know if I need some extra support, I am going to, like, this is the place I want to be. So just thinking from that perspective of like, what do we need to concentrate on as a board and what do we need to look at to even strengthen what we currently have?
I think the biggest component for me and probably the biggest driving force for why I accepted the position, you know, six years ago, was the inclusive mindset that we have. I think that was number one. I would say for us, from a special education standpoint, and I feel like I was pretty good at my job as a classroom teacher. Again, I was only impacting a very small amount of students. I think for us, our focus on our tier one instruction is truly the biggest component in all of our students seeing success. Because again, Mrs. Anderson's, Ms. Meisner's, you know, they're going to see those kids essentially more than that special education base manager would. Now again, that person's role is vital in meeting those needs because again, I think it comes down to what types of supports and universal design instruction. Like those types of components are where the special education teacher is going to make their biggest impact. Because again, like for us as a, as a school district, I wish we had more ability to co-teach more classes. But I would also say that having two special education teachers at a high school of our size, like that's, that's a lot. Because again, if you look at our caseload sizes, I can probably ask any high school special education teacher in our county and neighboring counties and they'd be like, whoa. Like those are fantastic numbers to have because then you can really focus on your students and your co-teaching and those components. So I guess I would say from my perspective, helping support our regular education teachers to implement supports within the classroom and continue to focus on that tier one instruction to the most vital component for our special education students.
Can, can you jump in on that too? So just talking like structurally, last year, when I first come in, in the summer, I asked Matt, when we met, we were discussing how we support all of our students. What he just referenced about at the high school, we had two special education teachers at the 4K building. And developmentally, that is a wide breadth of development level. And Matt had said ideally, developmentally, we would have three, three teachers at that grade level for the same reasons. It's more appropriate, smaller caseloads, more time it would be spent supporting students. So the board had approved adding that position and the other thing is that the board supported that. That was wonderful. There are a few reasons you can deny open enrollment and requests as a school district. Expulsion is one and special education services, if you can't meet the needs aligners, another. We sat down last summer and said, we are not going to deny students and this board support that based upon disability. Even though there is a legal right to say we don't have that because we want that mindset that this is the best place to, we want all students here because we're the best place for them to be because we care for our kids and we support our kids. So those were two big pieces and Matt was a huge advocate for those things. I didn't want to leave that out. That, that sends that message because I know many districts, it's, they don't even entertain it. The first question is, does a student have an IEP when you need an open enrollment and any request? And it's a matter of, we could, you can come up with any reason under this sign to say you can't service that student. And our, our mindset is, is that we're going to do everything we can to service any students who want to come to this school district itself.
Any other questions?
Could you go through that list that in the very beginning, we had talked about the 12 types of disabilities?
Yep, sorry. Autism, blind and visually impaired, deaf and hard of hearing, deafblind, emotional behavioral disability, intellectual disability, orthopedic impairment, other health impairment, significant developmental delay, specific learning disabilities, speech and language, and then traumatic injury.
Now, which of those would you say is the most prevalent in your opinion as far as what we see for?
So you have two that probably stand out the most, especially again, recent years. Specific learning disabilities in the area of reading and then other health impairment as again, more prevalent recently because of medical diagnoses and families looking for additional supports. Those are probably the two most that we see. I would say of all the areas, significant developmental delay to the one that I like the most because it requires us to reevaluate a student by the time they turn nine. So special education isn't necessarily something where, and it shouldn't be, but sometimes it is looked upon as a life sentence. So while you're in school, you're going to be in special education. As we are required to help the new disability category that kind of event now, the best I would go to mention. So there is a, that, that's probably not the best special education program because I'm not the, the, the. So the local education agency, so there is no specific type of, that's, you need to be that representative. In theory, it could be your superintendent, your director of student services, your building principals. It could also be staff. Again, the one caveat to being that representative is that you need to allocate funds. So if I were going to a, a meeting and a family says, well, by golly, I want X, Y, and Z. And as a, as a team, we determine that's something that that student benefits from. We need to make sure that we have that in place to do so. I can't just grant things really null because I think it's in the student's best interest and I can't say no because, well, we don't have the funding for it. So that is the one part that whoever that representative is, he needs to be well versed in what we can provide for students. But again, nothing says that it could be a teacher. As a special education teacher, I did LEU meetings. I would say that I didn't like doing it because it was normally said that, well, this isn't a very important one, so we'll have Matt do it. So I don't know if that's the message you want to send to parents that this one's not, it's not on the heavier hitters, so we'll have Matt over this one.
I have a quick question about the, so it's a law of referral, right? So what's the law say if someone refuses a referral? But then two months later, would want, if you need to be able to keep having referrals or is it once there's a referral, it's open to?
So essentially there's nothing else that says a referral is gone after 20 days if something isn't done. So that is kind of that tricky part where you do want to have individuals follow up. And if you're not in favor of moving down that pathway, you know, you could actually deny consent today and make a referral to them. You know, there's nothing that says you can't do that. Now, from an evaluation standpoint, let's just say I'm evaluating my son or daughter and I didn't get the results that I wanted to hear and I say now in two more weeks, let's do another evaluation. As a school district and as a team, we have to determine that we want to do that referral and evaluate that student inside of the school year. So we have to decide that we want to do that. You're not forced to do that if it's inside that calendar year. So again, you do sometimes have families where the determination isn't necessarily what they wanted. And they then try and seek out, well, let's, let's do another evaluation. When, you know, that, that existing data is there, we just did those things. That's not going to change. They just want a different result.
Other questions for Matt? Thank you. This was a great interview. Thank you.
All right, go into center.
Okay, under agenda item 10, the gap 20 update.
So this will be, this will be a short update. We're kind of, so what we've done in the interim since the last update is, is that Heather and her team have been exploring potential options for, as a resource to, to utilize here. It's starting to leak out some of the approved programs. Remember that's going to happen after January. We have a pretty good idea at this point right now. There are some that are note brainers. So they've started the process of reaching out to some districts where they're utilizing those resources currently, exploring what those options are. And then we're going to look at, what we're trying to do right now is we don't want to, that training is required and the resource, we're going to have to get some resources in. What we're looking for is to see if we can do a two, we, we don't want to like pay to get training done or commit staff to this time for the training and then have a resource that doesn't correlate with that. So we're hoping to get in where we can have training that's part of this resource that we use so we can effectively kill two birds with one stone. So. So right now, we're exploring our options, but we kind of have a definitive idea on a few resources that are going to be approved. And frankly, I think I mentioned this last time, the decision at this point is, you know, with Lucy Cockens, is a matter of do we continue using Lucy Cockens or do we, you know, start fresh with other resources? Do we keep some components? So that's probably the ongoing and that's where staff is getting brought into those conversations because we need to hear from staff. So Heather and Matt and the team are, have been meeting regularly and then are going to start having conversations with staff about how do we want to proceed with? If we know this is coming and we know certain components are coming, do we want to start filtering those in now? Like we just want to provide resources to start utilizing some of these practices in the classroom. I think the decision was pretty evident that yes, let's start doing some of these things now. Best time to start is right, right now. Let me know. So anyway, that's where we're at right now.
Is there any indication from DPI as to when you're going to release the funding for individual school? What the, what the budget is going to be for the individual school districts?
No, they gave, they gave that number and I apologize, I don't remember the exact number they said is going to be available for the resources. And what they said is it's first come, first served applications. But the allocation is going to be dependent upon the total number of applications. So those two things don't tie with each other. Saying it's first come, first served, but it's going to be dispersed based by how many districts apply. So our philosophy is I would like to be in a position to put in a request like early in the process. In, in the event that maybe they do end up running out of resources, but once again, the commitment has not changed. It said it's up to 50%. They will probably, up to 50%. So if you're not expecting any more than that, I would say it's likely going to be a lot less than that. So. That's what I have for an update. I'll bring more as we have more. I would anticipate January is going to be a pretty exciting and I do air quotes, exciting in terms of updates that I can bring at that point. Because it will have a lot more clarity on where we're, we're going at that point.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay. Item C, April 2nd, 2024, school board election in the
Item C, April 2nd, 2024, school board election and the official notice.
So Julie is the incumbent. The deadline for non-candidacy is December 22nd, and then the deadline for candidacy is January 2nd of 2024.
Item 11, discussion and action items. Our first item is to appoint the WASB delegate for the state education commission. This is the person who will go to the delegate assembly and out resolutions. Rick is officially our WASB delegate. And would you like to do that?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay. Very good. Do we have, do we need to have an alternate? Probably. They asked for one on a form that I have to fill out. Okay.
He's like, he's closing.
Yeah, in case you get right.
He probably said.
She'll pay for a one.
Any volunteers to be the alternate delegates?
You can volunteer, I'll make it.
Okay, okay. Well, if you have to put someone down, you can put my name down. I'm familiar with that function, so. And early bird registration ends on December 15th. So please, everybody, let Jason know what your plans are. I know that we have made, the hotel reservations are ready, and they can be canceled. And we will be at the Hilton this time, so that's connected to the convention facility.
Debbie's shaking her head back around the door.
Oh, no.
Well, it's not a no, it's across the street.
Yeah, but there's also a lot, right?
It's the Holiday Inn Express.
Oh.
Just kidding.
I think it's.
I'd still much rather.
You get free breakfast.
You do?
It's great. Can I get IHG?
It's a nice place. With the skywalk.
The skywalk is right.
I didn't want to overpromise and underdeliver on the Hilton, I apologize.
Okay.
If you, like, we have the rooms booked, we booked for everybody. And if you're going to, the deadline is, we have up until like probably a week before the convention to cancel it before.
So why don't we all just sign up?
You are, yup, we, we signed you up, you have to.
Yup, you don't have to.
Out there. Let me know if you're not planning on signing up yet.
We're at the Hyatt. Okay. They have a skywalk on some.
I went to Hyatt.
That's funny. That's funny.
I'm more of a Hyatt guy.
That's funny. That's funny, because last year. January 17, 18, 19? Got it.
We'll have to discuss, remember last year, I think some went down the neck before and some came down the other way, somewhere in Arizona.
We only have reservations for the 17th and 18th. So Wednesday, Thursday?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
We're down the day of. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Item B, approve the three-year library plan.
So this is a procedural process that we need to have this approved. And that means that verify with DPI that we have approved library plan. Do we have any specific questions?
Any questions? I have a question. I realize we may not have the answer here today.
I'll do my best.
Okay. So I am, by the way, I love the format of this. This is, this is really cool. And I'm trying to find, ah, there we are. On slide number 12. You know, it talks about going through a full collection and analysis. Leading and purchasing decisions will be made to improve the general library print collection age by 33% overall following accepted practices. Does that mean there would be a one-third turnover in our collection?
So I would indicate that's the way I read it, is to, when you say that. And that's a pretty intensive process, the leading processes is going through. And effectively, what you're doing is looking to see what books are being checked out. And I was actually educated on this a couple of weeks ago, and I was asking some questions. They said too, is they look at books that, they don't have the eye test. Like, you walk around, there's books that have torn labels on and stuff like that, that are removed from circulation too. And that they will talk to students about looking at getting different genres and like, so it's a pretty intensive process. I don't know, and I think this may have happened in a lot of places, like COVID, a lot of places, things kind of got, you were focused on the important things, right? And I think things with them. So we're undergoing a pretty intensive leading process right now in the library, that we kind of have all hands on deck with that. Going through, we just got a large shipment in last week of, you may be aware of Common School Funds. Common School Funds are allocated for purchasing things for your library and media center that have to be, they have to live there. It won't be checked out. They can't go in your classrooms, but you can purchase technology, books. It's a very valuable resource, and it's a significant amount of funding. So kind of going through, thinking about what we have for needs in the classrooms, and then areas, books that needed to be updated. So they're actually in the middle of the waiting process right now in the library. I would anticipate, honestly, from what I've seen from being in there, I, it wouldn't shock me if we had a third turnover with what I'm seeing as far as books that are on cards that get waited out. Like books that, there were books that haven't been checked out in nine years, you know, that are on the shelf. So they look at, you know, we have the Destiny records of when are the, when's the last time these books were checked out, those types of things. So I don't, I don't want to commit like and say absolutely, but I would say that sounds probably about right. I don't know if that's on a yearly basis. I don't know if they're talking during the course of the, if it's a three-year library plan. Over the course of three years, I'd say it's very reasonable that you would have a 33% turnover of materials in three years. I can get that answered, though.
So I have one question, and I'm not sure if it's most appropriate to ask it here or on one of our next action items. But I was asked, a person in the community did reach out and ask me, with our human growth and development curriculum, do we match, like, is there anything around what could be available in our library at the age levels that also matched with that? So that was a question that came, like, are we making sure that things that we say, we don't want to be teaching till eighth grade or ninth grade, aren't available in second graders for them to check out of our library? So I had that question. I don't know if it's best here or back. We can discuss it here or in the human growth and development. But that was, I had some, I actually had two parents reach out and ask that question specifically around Scholastic and how they're kind of shifting some, there's some shift in some of what they're printing. And what are we, how are we then managing that with maybe younger kids? And kind of where does that go? So just a question.
My initial response would be, I know with just having adopted and approved the human growth and development curriculum, I don't think there's been any additional processing or planning related to that. But that would be something I would have to, Matt, are you, any thoughts on that from the committee that specifically?
I'm not aware of any specific statute or diet study that says this literature is only for this group. I guess I would say from the individual classroom teachers or individual library, those would be things that I would say.
Directly.
If I'm checking on a book that is high school appropriate, I probably want one of our first graders.
And I think that's something that maybe the, like, we're looking at our clerks and our LMS, and the teachers that are in there are talking about, like, what is, honestly, when we're looking at appropriate reading level, period, like.
Yeah, except I think that the reason the question was asked, at least, I think is because there is appropriate reading level coming out in things that, that was very specifically determined in the human growth and development. Not that we wouldn't share it, but that we would share it at a certain grade level.
Right.
And now there is specific print and circulation that actually has it for very appropriate from a literacy component for a different age group. And that was the question. Like, do they, actually, the question was, does approving the human growth and development have any correlation to what else would be in this school and in print in the library? Was the, and, and again, just more of a question, probably more for their perspective of like, how close do I have, like, do I have to be really careful when my kid's bringing something home that they might bring this home? Or would they not be able to even have access to that because of what you're approving? So that was the question.
I may answer, I guess my thought would be, no, no, there wouldn't be a correlation there because thinking of the human growth and development curriculum as it's part of the class and it's promotional material and with the library checkout. I know it's probably not the answer you want to hear, but I don't have like a definitive answer, but to say like, when kids are checking out books, I know that those conversations are had as far as what's like an appropriate book for the, for the age level. I don't know if it's focused specifically on components of the human growth and development.
Not on content.
Yeah, right. But, but I would, you know, you asked, would you tell parents to monitor that? I would always like, I always like to know what books my kids are bringing home to read. Like, have conversations like, you know, when my kids are checking out books and bringing home, I'd just like to know what they're reading. I don't know, that's probably not the answer you want to hear, but I can try to get more information.
The main question is, what kind of screening do we have in place at this point that can ensure that our students, you know, are getting? And do we have any questionable or?
I guess.
I guess I could give you a question for the high school language or something, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, for sure.
But I, I think I understand where the concern is coming that there are some topics that are being introduced to young children at very young ages via books. And those topics are not at that age category in our human growth and development. Correct. And so that parent was just asking, can I assume they're correlated? And I'm like, oh, I don't think you can assume anything. So thanks for asking the question, right? Like, good question. So I just said that it was on the agenda, and it would be very appropriate for me just to ask the question and see what that's like.
Yeah, of course. So we have a lot of board policy on what our library adopts. And so like 361.1, all of them, most of them are 20-year-old policies. But they talk about who's in charge of what's selected at the library, how to handle complaints, which is where I probably steer any parents that have concerns about Scholastic. What leading looks like, that, and some of it looks like it probably could use in a look, to be honest. But the whole policy, right now, it says the person who's in charge of the library is the arbiter of this. That's who the superintendent has entrusted to enact board policy. And so the way it's written is that that person would be, they report policy, including human growth and development curriculum, and know what's appropriate to have on the shelves. And there's a lot here that would.
So what kind of, what kind of discussions have our library had with you? Have you guys had discussions on what should be acceptable and what's appropriate, what's not?
So what I would tell you, I guess the way I would answer that, Chris, is like Dr. Watson said, as far as the complaint procedure, like if a parent or if anyone becomes aware of like questionable material, they would, they would submit a complaint like with the rationale behind what's, I will indicate to you that in my year and a half here, we haven't received any of those in the district. So part of the leading process, I'm not gonna say specifically that part of the leading process is determining like, you know, the, necessarily the topics of the books, more than the initial part right now, what we're doing is, is that based upon like what books are better on the shelves and not checked out. That certainly is probably part of the conversation that we're going through, is looking at, at potential books that may be controversial topics and stuff. Have I had a conver, I think you all know we're in a unique position with our LMS position because of, so we have a person who's LMS of record, who is getting the LMS certification right now, Mr. Price. We have had that happening under the guidance of Cheryl Egan, who is from CISA. She is a licensed LMS, longtime LMS. She's been consulting and helping with this process. Cheryl Ashbeck has been helping with the leading process, and Michelle Gashken. We haven't received any complaints that would initiate like a review of any materials or resources in my year and several months.
So new books, how do we decide which books we're ordering for the library? I mean, are we, do we, do we put in bus for certain books? Or do we get books issued by, you know, I guess DPI and stuff, or is it?
No, it's, the teachers would usually will get requests from classroom teachers, from students, and then more popular, like, serious topics that the LMS will go through and like, they work in conjunction to do that. But no, DPI does not indicate anything about what books you need to order for, through your Common School Funds. That's up to the local school district trust. For like what we put in our library for.
Have you had the opportunity to kind of go through and just kind of review what we have built for our library districts? To make certain that we don't have controversial material in there?
I have not, but that, that's one of those roles that like, that's not my role as district administrator. It's that, it's part of that process through, through, through the complaint process. If we receive specific complaints about questionable material, then we go through a review process. But that isn't like my role as the district administrator to go through and evaluate the materials in the library.
But somebody, somebody should do that.
The LMS.
And I don't think that it should be done after a complaint. I think that's something we did at the block.
That's kind of the way my brain has been working. I think it's really good that we haven't had any complaints. But how do we operate in a proactive manner?
Here would be my only concern with having a single, once again, you referenced, a single person going through, making determinations about what would be, it's subject to the individual doing the review. It's a really slippery slope. Like, I get the conversation, and that's why I say if people have concerns, I just know this, is that censoring books and removing books is a really slippery slope. It can be based upon whose vision of what's appropriate or what's not appropriate. But any parent who has concerns, we're gonna listen to those concerns and do that. That, I hope that makes sense, why I'm saying, that's why it's not something I want necessarily my LMS randomly pulling, pulling books off the shelf. Like, what's their litmus test for saying this is, you know, this is a controversial material?
I also think that at certain age groups, just because I don't think that, like, I wouldn't want to take it away from someone who actually wants to read that, right? I think that the only reason I brought it up was in the context of we're putting some structure around and recommending and approving something based on a community coming together that at certain age groups is when it would be available. And that drove the question, not about every controversial topic, but about this particular array. Would we match our library media, what we're purchasing to match those age groups? That we would say we would talk about that. So we wouldn't buy something for a second grader that we just approved, that we wouldn't be teaching till eighth grade. Again, in eighth grade, if we say that we're teaching it, again, I think that we do have parents that need to step up around like, is my eighth grader gonna read it or not? And that, but I could see how it feels a little disconnected if we just said, we're not doing that till eighth grade. And then we have books that.
Address the topic.
Address the topic with second graders that can take it up. So again, I don't know that we have to get into the full lead of every controversial topic in the library because, whoo, whoo. But that particular, that's why I brought it up, just because is there any correlation in our library plan to incorporate another board policy that we're gonna hopefully approve tonight, which gives some age and timelines of when the school supports and kind of introduces some topics? So that was kind of the.
It's been a lot of years in the library. And I think the reason you haven't heard a complaint, Jason, since you've been here is because there probably isn't anything to complain about. The only problem when I've worked in the library that I've ran into is. The only problem when I've worked in the library that I've ran into is when the books are popular, you don't have enough for the kids. Our kids love to read.
Yeah.
And they will read a series or a group just pretty, if we have the books for them. But in my time in the library, I never ran into any book.
And I think, I think parents might be asking because, um, and, and the only reason I brought it up is because if we are purchasing the curriculum and we haven't had an approved Human Growth and Development plan for a while, so.
Ever.
Ever, sure, so a while felt better than ever. Okay, so we've not had that, now we have that. We're integrating and purchasing material, will there be, like, will those align? I think was the only question. So what I see is that there would be value in the person, for the person making the purchasing decisions on the elementary level to have awareness of the scope and sequence for Human Growth and Development.
Yes, absolutely.
And if X is covered in sixth grade, we should not be purchasing a book that covers X, written for a second grader. Is.
I, I think what you referenced about the scope, absolutely, is have some awareness of that. Now, the slippery piece of that, we're going to give you, you're not going to necessarily have specific books that say this is for a fourth grader or a sixth grader, and with our library, it's accessed by 4K8, so that would go to the same thing with that LMS person is having the awareness of that, and those are conversations about, you know, appropriate reading level for this, so yes, I would acknowledge that there would be value in that component. Kind of being a, the structure being an educational piece with our LMS, yes.
Based on the fact that it is our responsibility as a school district to determine what kinds of books are in our library, I think that you still need to have a piece of pilot to make certain that you're kind of overseeing that, you know, we want to make certain that we are proactive in the long run here, so that we don't, I'm not sure many years ago, you were in the library, right? How long was that?
Last year.
Just last year, 2018. So that's very recent. That's, that's good information to have, and I appreciate that, so that's good to know, I, I really appreciate hearing that.
I would throw it back to the never. Trans proactive is my building, you know.
I, I, but I just, it just feels to me that it, it is our responsibility. It's gonna fall on your lap, obviously, you know, if something happens, so we want to stay proactive.
I think our policy is, I mean, something you need to take into.
Yeah, we can take that.
Yeah, but that's what they're there for, I mean, I'm just using it personally, you know, 10,000 books in our system, I think, and each one is a book, so if there is one that slips through the cracks, you have to either address it.
And that, you know, what, what policy number did you state those were under the?
361.1.
361.1? We could certainly have those.
Yeah, I actually gave those.
Get the Lasbys.
I gave copies to the CISA 5th meeting, so she was supposed to be going.
Okay, so that should be coming forward, that actually through the policy.
Because you're talking about potentially recircling a third of your book, so it's timely to make sure that we're matching, purchasing things to match other policies then.
Yeah, we're not just leading, we're acquiring.
Well, with the, with the Human Growth and Development being established and with us transitioning into a new LMS, we're doing the major reading process, we have shared available, it just makes sense to go through and maybe review that policy at this point.
Thank you.
Yup.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments related to the three-year library plan? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the library plan.
I'm making a motion to approve the three-year library plan for there. 2023, 20 through 2026.
Is there a second?
I can second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the three-year library plan for 2023, 2026. Second by the same I.
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the second reading and approval of updates to Policy 111, School District Goals.
No changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading and approve updates to Policy 111, School District Goals.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded to accept the second reading and approve updates to Policy 111. Allen Beamer, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to Policy 341. Dot 34, Human Growth and Development Instruction.
No changes from first reading.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept second reading and approve update Policy 341.131, Human Growth and Development Instruction. I'm sorry.
Does it second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded to accept the second reading and updates to Policy 341. Dot 34, Beamer, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 12, legislative update. The legislature is officially out of session as of last week, Thursday, for calendar year 2023. There'll be reunion in January, there will be a session in January going into February. One of the things we talked about at the last meeting was arranging a visit with Representative and the mayor and Senator Testan. I sent, because session ended on Thursday, on Friday morning, I sent an email to their offices indicating our interest in meeting with them as a board. Have not heard back as of today. Did indicate that we were looking at possibly the first or second meeting in December. And, you know, a time at their convenience. And as soon as I hear something back, I will let Jason know. And we can calendar it. So hopefully, I did indicate in the email that probably the best time for our board members is first thing in the morning or 4:00 PM or later. Just because of people that still, that work for pay. Is that what it's called? Right.
I, I do have one update I would like to share, hot off the presses today. So you're aware with the Viennian budget that was approved, the $325 per pupil, which the nice thing about being in the first year of Viennian is that we kind of have some knowledge about what's gonna happen next year. The thing that we didn't know was, I talked about the revenue limits, that we were kind of locked in with the revenue limits. We got a memo today with clarification from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau that they confirmed, directed from them, that that $325 next year will be in addition to the revenue limits for all districts, which means we will get at least $325 per pupil, even though we're capped at our limits, so we're going to get that per pupil increase. That's really good news, and that was confirmed from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau. Another district had asked that question, received an answer from them and shared it with the group, so that's really good news.
Could you please share that memo?
I will, it's actually a three-page memo, I will share it with the board. But that was great news today, got it about 2:00 o'clock today.
Great.
You could hear Pam giggling from her office when I shared it with her.
Who's, who's education is, like, who do you?
Well, this was, I don't know, the answer was.
I know ours is, I just don't know what.
I, it'll be, it's in the memo, like, they quoted him directly. That's all I know.
That's very good. And as soon as we hear something back from those offices, I will, I'll touch base again later this week. Yeah, hopefully we can schedule something.
Good.
So, um, any, I'll pick, anything else related to legislative policy or any questions? Okay. Agenda item 13, public comments per Policy 187. No public comments yet, they do. 14, future agenda items.
We talked about the grant.
The grants.
Writing.
Yup. The, uh, the food service will be coming in December, the State Report Card data update will be coming in December, and then Safety and Security was one we were looking at for January.
And then we'll add a policy that.
Library. That should be, I would assume we could probably have that come for a first grader next month.
Mary Ann, just a reminder, I'm actually not here next month.
You're not here in December, okay. Thank you. And since we're on that, I'm telling you, I am not going to be here in February or in March. So I will be watching.
I won't be.
Okay.
Just saying.
I can unmute you.
Maybe a while. In December.
Well, I thought, well, I thought you were talking about.
No, 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 I'll, I'll be here in February and March, I just will be watching in Jan, in December, I'll get very well updated though. Unless we want to change the date, but I, I'm gone. Okay, that sounds, sounds good, actually. Okay, um, if there's none for the business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We've been seconded to adjourn, I want to go. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.